Ladies and gentlemen, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice that this meeting is published in the local papers and also posted in lobby of this building. We are being streamed live on montclair.peg.tv and also broadcast live on Channel 34. First up is our roll call.
Chair Winn?
Here.
Vice Chair Brodak?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz? Not here. Mr. Brandon?
Here.
Counselor Schlegler?
Here.
Ms. Willis is excused. Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally?
Here.
Ms. Lachman? Mr. Barr is excused and Mr. Gilmer is excused.
Mr. Schwartz is here.
Oh, okay, great.
Just walked in.
Okay. All right, we have our minutes from our July 23 meeting.
I've received amended minutes from Ms. Lachman and Vice Chair Brodak, which I believe have been distributed to everybody. Are there any additional changes to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, we have a resolution from 256 Park Street, LLC.
Are there any amendments to the resolution? 256 Park Street.
There was a question. Is there variance required? I started off the discussion.
Parking variance was required as a result.
And the resolution says possibly parking variance. So is there a parking variance or not? That would be my final.
There is.
There is a parking variance.
So we should probably strike possibly then or just like that?
Yeah, I was being, right, I was being somewhat acritical on that when I wrote it because there was a question, but now I'm convinced that there is.
Yeah, so the variance would be for one parking space.
That's right.
I don't know what section that was.
I don't remember.
It's page seven. The whereas that they're talking about, parking space denominated one would be converted into loading area.
Oh, so, well, you're taking out thus eliminating a variance originally requested? Page seven.
Is that item four?
The first full paragraph. It says, "Is indicated that the parking variance denominated number one would be converted into a loading area, thus eliminating a variance originally requested." You're not eliminating a variance.
No.
So I think that should come out.
Okay.
Or are you eliminating the loading variance?
Oh, okay, a variance for loading.
Right. Because they noticed, I think, for a couple of different, for four different variances.
That's correct. The original application was for four variances.
One including no loading zone and the other for parking variance.
And two for both variants.
Gotcha. And then by the end, they had resolved the off-site loading, leaving only a parking variance.
At the very, very.
The very end, yes.
So where in here does it say that the board granted them a variance for once?
I had some acritical language in there.
I think page seven, item number four, towards the bottom, said, "As a result of changes to the plan that were made by the applicant during the course of the application, all of the variances except possibly for the parking variance have been eliminated." So I think Tony's saying, "Take out possibly."
Possibly for.
I think it should be clear, except for a variance for one parking space.
Right, we need to be specific about the variances that we're including and not.
And we granted it.
It's for one parking space, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. You want me to make those changes?
That'd be great. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
All right, and that brings us to application Valley and Bloom. Don't be shy.
I'm an attorney with Kiesa, Shehenean, and Giannamassai. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Montclair Acquisition Partners, in connection with their application for signage approval with variances to construct certain proposed signage, specifically canopy signage and plaque signage on two separate existing buildings which are located and commonly known as 34 Valley Road and 36 Valley Road. In conjunction with certain recommendations that were previously made by HPC, the applicant would propose to amend its application to seek approvals for variances for not only two canopy signs, but now for four plaque signs as opposed to the three plaque signs which were originally proposed. Our notice with respect to this application reflected that change as a result of our agreement basically to all of the recommendations that the HPC had offered several months back. The proposal triggers the need for two specific variances that we're asking that this board grant. The first one is in connection with ordinance section 347-110.1B7, and it's for wall-mounted business signs. One wall-mounted plaque sign is permitted per business, and our application is seeking two wall, or, excuse me, four wall-mounted plaque signs, two for each of the buildings. We had originally posted the three, as I indicated previously, however, we went to the four. We had proposed two on the building location at 34 Valley Road because we felt that it created symmetry for the building being on either side of the entranceway. Our recommendation of the HPC was that we provide for that same, they agreed with that, and asked that we provide for that same symmetry at the additional building on 36 Valley Road, which is why we have our application before you this evening for the four plaque signs. In addition to that, we are seeking a variance from ordinance section 347-1105A in connection, A2 rather, in connection with other signs and awnings and canopy signs. The code specifically provides that sign text must be painted on the area of the lowest 12 inches of an awning or canopy, and specifically that such text may not be higher than six inches. Our proposed canopy signs, the canopies themselves are 18 inches, and we're proposing a lettering height of 12 inches in connection with the two canopy signs.
Did you say 11 inches?
12 inches.
12 inches.
And we are prepared this evening to offer testimony, first from Ms. Tracy Wilkinson, who is a representative of the applicant and who previously appeared before DRC as well as the HPC, and then from Steve Lydon of Burgess Associates, who would be our expert in the field of professional planning in support of our application. And so if there are no further questions for me, I'd like to have our first witness.
All right. Martha.
Hello. May, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
My name is Tracy Wilkinson. I am the property manager for Valley and Bloom Apartment Community in Montclair.
Ms. Wilkinson, where is your office located?
Is located at 34 Valley Road.
And for how long have you been employed as the property manager?
For three years in September.
Okay, and are you fully familiar with this application?
I am.
Okay, and you've reviewed the application and the plans that were submitted to the town?
Yes, I have.
And you've appeared before the DRC and the HPC to present the comments?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and as a result, are you familiar with the comments that were issued by both the Design Review Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee?
Yes.
Okay. The four drawings that she'll be speaking to were part of the site plan submission that was submitted to the board, so I can refer to them as signed details or signed drawingsheet and all the details.
Well, you know, why don't I, I've actually pre-marked the exhibits, so if I can read them into the record. A1 is the application, A2 is the certification of taxes paid, A3 is the proof of publication, A4 is the affidavit of service, A5 is the four-page plan set on 11 by 17 paper size dated March 17, 2018, prepared by North Star Signs. A6 is a three-page set of photographs on 11 by 17 paper. A7 is the Historic Preservation Commission Report dated May 24, 2018, and A8 is the I think it's going to fall.
There we go.
Traugler has worse problems, I'll tell you.
You think it's going to come down while we're?
Yeah, maybe.
So I'd like to refer first to the photo at the top of the board, which I believe was marked as part of the three-page photo exhibit in the record as A6.
As A6, yeah.
And Ms. Wilkinson, can you please describe what this photo depicts?
This is the photo of Central Verde Drive, and to my left is 34 Valley Road, and through my right is 36 Valley Road. 36, yeah.
Could you please point to where the sign is proposed to be located? On 34.
The sign is proposed to be located on the main entrance of building 34.
And what specifically, in terms of the business of this building, is being conducted behind the area in which the entrance is located?
This is where the leasing office interest and the management office is located here as well as the concierge desk. So when a potential new resident comes down Valley Road to come into Central Verde, they cannot identify where the actual address is for the leasing office. So it makes it very difficult for them to understand exactly which door to come into.
And approximately how long have these buildings been occupied, or has the leasing office been present here?
For almost three years in September.
Okay. And next I'll be referring to what has been marked as part of A5, the four-page plan set, the plan stated March 17, 2018, by North Star Signs. And could you please describe the intended signage for this location? I'm referring to 34 Valley.
The intended signage is to be under the last post located at the main entrance of the building.
Okay, so it's your understanding that they're proposing one canopy sign?
One canopy sign and two medallions.
Okay, and the canopy sign is approximately 18 inches?
It is.
And the actual lettering height proposed is 12 inches?
That's correct.
And then with respect to the two plaque signs which are proposed at either side of the entrance, is it your understanding that the applicant has agreed to change what's currently shown in this exhibit and is actually only going with the lettering for the number of the proposed building, 34?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and do you know the approximate lettering height? Was it 18 inches?
It's 18. It was 24.
Okay. And was that also a concession that was made in light of comments raised by the HPC?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chair, you're just having the number 34?
Yes.
Rather than the, okay.
Yes, so even though our original application exactly showed the name of the building and what was the street name, that's all being removed and then it's only going to say 34.
Okay.
Is the 34 is going to be 18 inches high, or the whole medallion's 18 inches high?
The whole, so the whole medallion is, I believe, 18.
That was my understanding.
Yes.
And how high is the lettering or numbering, I guess, in this case? Is it as shown there, or will it be bigger now that the words are gone?
It's going to be bigger.
To my understanding, it was larger.
Yeah.
Yes, it was larger.
Okay. Do you know how?
I don't know the length.
How big?
No.
Six inches.
I'm just checking specifically back to the HPC's comments. They had requested specifically that the proposed medallion plaque sign should be reduced in size to 18 inches in diameter, that the applicant agreed to, and then the actual lettering height.
I don't remember if we said anything about that. I think we can go for six inches.
I mean, I think the HPC report, item number four, says the text size for the address number can be increased slightly following removal of the building name text.
Yeah, it's 12.
Okay, so 12-inch numbering on an 18-inch plaque sign?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, just so since we're talking about that, would you have a, you know, so it's 18 inches long, 18 inches wide, the lettering is 12 inches, or the numbering is 12 inches, would it be, so that would give you three and three on the top, right?
Yes.
What are you going to do on the sides? One would make it, one would think you'd have three inch on the sides as well.
It's going to be centered in the center of the plaque.
Centered, okay.
Anything else?
They are, they're actually the next part of the application. So now I'm going to be referring to another photograph that was presented and was marked previously as part of exhibit A6, the three-page photos, photo exhibit. I'm referring to this photo rendering. Does this accurately depict the existing signage that's located on the sign band that's proposed?
Yes.
Okay, and now I'll be referring to this plan, which again was submitted as part of the site plan set and was marked into evidence previously as part of A5, the four-page plan set. And does this describe what is proposed in connection with the signage, specifically in connection with the canopy signage?
That's correct.
And this is the signage that's proposed for the building located at 36 Valley Road?
That's correct.
And what does this entrance serve as in connection with the building?
This is the third lobby connected, well, the second lobby connected to building 36, but this is the front of the building, which if you're coming down Valley Road or coming up Valley Road, it would signify the entrance or the name of the building. So, because you wouldn't directly see the name of the building on Central Verde, but you would directly see the name of the building if you're trying to identify what the actual name of the building is. So if you're going past and you're just, if you're curious in leasing at the building, you'll have a name, so you know exactly what it is. And the other one is to identify for people that's driving in to know where the office is located.
Okay, and the height of the canopy area where the letters would be installed is 18 inches at this location?
That's correct.
Okay, and the sign proposed here contains 12-inch lettering height?
Yes, that's correct.
And have the colors of the letter been designed to match the color of the canopy?
Yes.
Could you briefly state what the applicant's goal is with regard to the proposed signage for these two buildings?
The goal is to have direct for a potential resident to identify directly what the name of the building is.
So what color are the letters going to be?
Burgundy.
And the canopy is?
Like a purpleish.
Yeah, like a purpleish burgundy.
It's the color scheme of the building itself.
So they're going to match the canopy?
Yes.
So the only way that you'll be able to see the letters is if it's lit up?
Well, the letter, the lettering looks purple, and the canopy is more of a bronze color.
Metallic.
Yeah.
Are the letters raised, or are they flush with the?
I'm just wondering, because you said that you want to identify the building.
They're channel letters, so they're aluminum channel letters, and so they're proposed with halo lighting. And the wattage actually that was originally proposed was reduced, again, based upon feedback that we got from the HPC in connection with the application, but they will be lit.
I believe that they're going to be attached to a panel, and the panel.
Correct, it's going to be attached to the canopy.
The panel will be the same color as the canopy. The letters, I think, are going to be a slightly different color.
Yes, that is correct.
That's my understanding.
It's hard to miss Valley and Bloom, so why do you feel like it has to be lit up? Nothing else is.
I'm sorry, it's hard to miss the building, but it's not, you don't know the name of the building.
Well, I mean, if you had the name on that canopy but not lit up, people could identify it?
Maybe not at night, though, because that's when you're going to see the lighting.
Why do we even have to know the name? What's wrong with just the number of the street, like most other buildings? What in particular about Valley and Bloom do we have to brand this building?
Well, you would want to know the name, because if you're looking to lease there, you want to know the building that you're calling.
Well, that helps you promote the building. I'm talking about from an identification standpoint for people driving by, what's the benefit to people just driving by to know the name? Why can't they just know, why can't they just know the number of the building, like every other building?
Well, they wouldn't see the number of the building, because the number of the building is not located there, just the name. The number of the buildings are located on Central Verde Drive.
So what I'm suggesting is, why do we have to brand the name of the building? Why can't we just call it, put a number up there? Number on Bloomfield Avenue, what's wrong with that?
Well, it would actually be in conjunction with the other names on our retail space. I mean, there's names on the retail, so why wouldn't it be the name on the building?
Well, the retail are selling a store service. You're not selling a building here.
Or we're leasing apartments, though.
Right, it's providing a service.
I think a lot of the newer, large apartment buildings do have the names on it.
Yeah, they all have the name of the building.
It's not that unusual. Think of the McLaren, McLaren II. But are they lit up?
The Sienna is.
The Sienna has the name. That's a good example.
You've proved my point.
The green has lighting behind it. Yeah, pretty much all the apartments.
But illuminated signage is permitted under the code, and so really the only variance that we're seeking is in connection with the lettering height. The signage itself is permitted, and the illumination of that signage by the type of lighting that we're proposing is all permitted under the code in accordance with the redevelopment plan for this area.
Not really, my thought is that that would be a sign to say, but there are two signs that say the same thing, so if someone lives in a leasing office, one says Valley and Bloom, and the other says Valley and Bloom, one doesn't say a leasing office. So could, like, when I was looking for Valley and Bloom, I might walk up to these doors, these doors, and I'm looking to walk in, you have to walk outside. So if I was looking for the building, the building was closed, I'd be frustrated, where is the leasing office? So that's my comment. Maybe one should be identified, that it's down with a leasing office, so it's clear. It seems like that's the intention.
Is this door normally open where it says Valley and Bloom? Would people want to walk in there?
It's open till eight o'clock.
Oh, it is? Okay, so could they find the leasing office in here?
Well, it's not been easy for them to find a leasing office without a lot of explaining as to where the leasing office is located. I think just knowing, like, exactly where that door is and that their sign is there to say Valley and Bloom.
So if I, on my phone, I say, you know, come to leasing office at Valley and Bloom, I park my car, and I see this entrance, Valley and Bloom, on Bloomfield Avenue, can I walk in there and find the leasing office, or do I have to know that there's the sign in the little alley?
The leasing office would be directed to 34, so it would be indicated by the 34 markers, and then the actual residential building, the residential entrance, would be marked with 36.
So if I were confused and I walked up to this, there'd be a sign saying, "This is not the leasing office, go around the corner?"
Well, actually, if you're coming to the leasing office and that Valley and Bloom sign is there and the address, since if you put it in your GPS, that's exactly where it brings you to, you would know that that's the entrance, because what happens is we have people going to 36 trying to open that door, which is always locked, and not knowing that the leasing office is across the street.
I guess the question is, what's the purpose of the sign? Who's going to be coming to this, through this door?
Residents.
Through the, it's here.
Yeah.
The resident, that's a resident entrance.
So people who are looking to lease of the building aren't going to be using that door anyway? They're supposed to be directed around the corner to Central Verde, right?
Yeah, that is true, but you still wouldn't know that this is part of Valley and Bloom if you don't see a sign there. How would you know what the building is?
I think it's kind of your call, but usually when there's a sign on a marquee, it means that there's something, there's a store right there, and that's what people psychologically think about, like a movie theater or a store. So people want to go, if a building is named, it's usually somewhere on the building, and it's just, it's evident that it's a sign for the building, it's not for, this seems like it's a retail-y sort of sign. It doesn't really identify the building, but that's your call, so.
The marquee above 34, it says Valley and Bloom too, which is on Central Verde.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Yeah, it's only on 34. The one right across the street is 36, but doesn't have a marquee sign.
Right, it's two different buildings.
I'm talking about the one that's on Bloomfield Avenue.
Yeah, that's just the corner that would identify the whole project.
Okay, I'm just, it's your call, I'm just saying.
Do the little retail stores have numbers? Are they numbered?
Yes.
So they are, okay.
Are you finished with the testimony from your witness?
I am.
We've kind of gotten off track with all these questions.
There's two plaque signs for this entrance as well, right?
Correct.
And they both have just the number 36.
Correct, those will also just display the number for the building.
And it'll be the same size, 18 inches diameter with a 12-inch letter, or number?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public of this witness concerning your testimony? Nope, doesn't look like it.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Using that microphone, would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Sure, the name is Steve Lydon, L-Y-D-O-N, with Burgess Associates at 25 Westwood Avenue, Westwood, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Lydon, could you please state your background and educational background?
Sure, I'm a Rutgers University graduate. I am a holder of a professional planning license issued by the state of New Jersey for the last 30 years or thereabouts. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I've held that probably since early 2000s. I have testified in front of boards like this one, boards of adjustment, and I've also testified in front of municipal and county courts, Superior Court.
Okay, I move that this board accept the applicant as an expert in the field of professional planning?
Will accept him.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lydon, could you please describe the property?
Sure, it's located at the heart of the Valley and Bloomfield intersection. It is a large building, it is six stories in height, and there are actually two buildings that are separated with. And there are actually two buildings that are separated as we've heard, one at 34 and one at 36. The site itself is about 3.86 acres. And using this exhibit, which I guess we're gonna mark A9.
Yeah. I don't have stickers. Just put today's date. If you could just mark it A9 with today's date.
A9 is an exhibit five, the digital images, which were taken by me. I've been to the site numerous times, but I think these were taken last week. I got rid of the earlier photographs that you made. Photograph one is one that I like because it gives you some idea of the complexity of the intersection. This is taken from in front of the municipal police department and specifically at the driveway, looking towards the intersection and you can barely see, there's a canopy there at all. And of course, right now, the canopy is not benefited by any numbering or lettering or signs or plaques. Photo two is one taken at the intersection. And I think that photo puts into visual context one of your comments in the 2017 Unified Land Use and Circulation Element of the master plan, which identifies the PQ, the property in question, is located at a wide, odd angle intersection. And from being out there, that's true. What's also different about the intersection is where the stop lines are. Sometimes they're relatively close to the intersection, other times they're further back. But certainly, it's not in a wide intersection and certainly it's a wide intersection. So that is, is a quick land use context of, of the site.
Okay, and can you please speak to the proposed signage in connection with this application and specifically the deviations that are sought?
Sure, we're seeking a canopy sign which would go on the upper van. It's been constructed as an integral part of the building facing the intersection. As well as reflected on, images four and five, there's a canopy constructed as an integral part of the building over that main entrance as well. And on those two canopies, we're seeking to install a sign on a backing which would say Valley and Bloom. And those letters would be 12 inches tall. And I think the context of that is important. Those signs are going on a, in both cases, large, six-story building. I'm not sure of the exact height of the building, but it's a relatively small sign on a large building. The other signs that we're seeking are two plaque, or yeah, two plaques, which is what the terminology and some of the reports were, for each building. And those plaques originally had been proposed when the application was submitted at two feet in height. And as you've heard tonight, those have been reduced to height 18 inches. The other modification is those will be simplified and they will simply have the address of the two buildings on them.
Okay, and can you speak to how the proposed relief relates specifically to provisions within the Township of Montclair's master plan?
Sure, as I mentioned, in 2017, you prepared and adopted a Unified Land Use and Circulation Element and it identifies Bloomfield Avenue as a regional destination and important regional center. So you're attempting to draw people from more than the immediate vicinity to the area. Furthermore, the land use element seeks to establish a vibrant place to live, shop, and work. And more specifically, the land use element seeks to further enliven the Western Gateway. And that's important in this application because the Township Council has also adopted a redevelopment plan for this area called Montclair Center Gateway Phase 1. So we're specifically located within that Western Gateway that the land use element seeks to further enliven. I've mentioned, your master plan element calls this a wide, odd angle intersection. Your land use element also makes an observation that Montclair Center contains an eclectic mixture of architecture and we believe that the signage should reflect this eclectic mix. And in many ways, your redevelopment plan echoes many of the master plan themes and languages, but more focused on the Gateway 1 area as you would typically suggest. The property in question is in that redevelopment Phase 1 plan. And the plan itself says it seeks innovative design necessary to create an exciting new place. And we believe that the installation of that, the new buildings seek to create and hopefully start that exciting new place. Furthermore, the redevelopment plan seeks to create a visual focal point that helps establish a central place and we believe signage is part of that. Interesting, when the Township Council adopted the redevelopment plan, they did not adopt new specific sign regulations for the redevelopment plan. Instead, the sign regulations are referred back to the general zoning ordinance. And you've heard, we're seeking a couple of variances from them. So we need, since there are both variances, we need to either show a C1 or a C2 basis. And C2 basis, basis being that the benefits of the deviation outweigh any detriments. And we need to, of course, identify and demonstrate the negative criteria, showing there's no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan with your zoning ordinance.
Okay, so what is your specific basis for approval of the variances in connection with this application?
Well, first, I think it's important to recognize we're here for signs and signs are important in urban context. They perform many functions such as wayfinding, such as site identification, business location, branding of buildings or an area, energizing the public realm, enlivening spaces, and complementing architecture. And as far as energizing the public realm, when I was first here, I noticed that there were signs that I assume was put up by either the Park Authority or the township itself or some business group that were on the light bulbs up and down Bloomfield Avenue. And I think that's totally appropriate and it shows that one of the purposes of signage is to enliven the public realm. And it also shows, I believe, the importance of signage. Even simple signs, sometimes they just talk about they're seasonal. And in the springtime, they've got flowers and in the wintertime, they've got snowflakes. But it helps enliven and give, give excitement to an area. In looking at your specific ordinance, specifically with the canopy limitation on letters, it appears the regulation was drafted with your traditional canopy valance in mind. The one that comes off the building at a triangular shape, if you look at the building on the side, with a small, usually eight to 12-inch valance at the bottom of that. If that's in fact true, which I suspect it is, the limitation of six inches on the valance makes a lot of sense. And in fact, it matches the amount of space you have with a buffer both up and below it. Here, though, we don't have that traditional canopy. First of all, it's not vinyl or plastic and it's not at an angle to the street on a sloping angle. Instead, it's clear in both cases, constructed as an integral part of the building entrance. And instead of being the traditional eight to 12 inches that a traditional canopy valance is, these are 18 inches. So I think the platform, if you will, where the letters are being mounted, gives basis for the deviation that we're seeking. And we're not seeking a tremendous sized sign. We're seeking one that's 12 inches, the letters are 12 inches tall. We believe the letters are well matched in scale to both the building and the canopy that they would be attached to. With regards to the proposed plaques, size is well matched to the building height and bulk. Area will benefit from attractive, well-designed signage and we believe these signs represent that. And presently, as I think these photos indicate, especially four and five, the canopies look unfinished right now. The proposed signage will finish out and complete the building entrance experience, thereby complementing the architecture, which is one of the purposes that, one of the purposes that good signage accomplishes. The front building signs are well matched to the width of the intersection that the site fronts upon. And I think that's important to understand as we look at a slight deviation in the letter height. We believe the proposed signage fits well with the overall character of West Gateway and the particular buildings to which they would be attached to. The canopy is a logical location for signage, as are the plaques which flank the building's primary entrance. This is consistent with language in the redevelopment plan, which offers direction to applicants that the most prominent articulation of the facades should place focus on major pedestrian entryways. And in both cases, that's exactly what these are. The signage is one aspect of the call for articulation. And rather than obscure architectural features of the building, which is one of the things your ordinance seeks to avoid, the proposed signage supports and focuses attention on the building's architectural features. The proposed signage only conveys building name and address information, nothing more, in simple and clean design. The sign illumination will comply with the recommendations of the Historic Preservation Commission in serving lighting by employing a warmer color. That's with the LED lighting, which is something we never needed to deal with 10 years ago. The metal finishes on the plaque signs will be consistent with the metal finish of the nearby light fixtures as recommended. And the plaque signs will be, the letters will be pin-mounted to the building, flush-mounted. And with, with regard to the leasing sign, we believe the three signs for the leasing office are needed for site identification as no other signs identify the use. We believe one is one that, the canopy sign will catch drivers' attentions primarily and the plaque signs will capture pedestrian attention, whether they're on that side of, of the street or on the opposite side of the street. They're sidewalk on both sides. So we believe there's both a C1 basis for the grant of the variance for the height of the canopy signs on the intersection at Bloom and Valley because of the irregular and wide intersection. We believe that's a C1 basis. And then we believe primarily the basis for the grant of the variances is C2 for all the reasons that I, I just testified to. And we believe that the variances can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good or to the impairment to the master plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Questions from the public?
What, refresh my memory real quick. What did you say on the, the valance on a normal cloth sign, the height is usually?
That usually runs between eight to 12 inches.
Okay.
And your ordinance calls for six-inch letters to fit in there, I don't wanna say perfectly, but it's a good match for that kind of a, of a sign or valance, rather. Here, they're 18 inches, it is 18 inches.
So on a typical, you know, cloth valance, you'd have about 50 to 75% of the height taken up by the letters?
I think that's a good approximation, yes, typically, maybe a little bit more, probably a little bit more.
And here, it's about 66%, 67%?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thanks.
I have a question. Isn't that proposing any building signs to identify the building? So essentially, this is replacing what would normally be a building sign?
It's what we're coming in with, yes.
That's correct.
Just to give you reference, the canopy signs are usually, are, you can have a canopy sign and a building sign. Here, it seems that they're actually using the canopy to create what's, what's known as a building sign. And the maximum size, to give you a perspective, the maximum size for a building sign is 24 inches. So that's to give you a little bit of a frame of reference. It's smaller than what a normal building sign would be, but larger than a canopy sign. I just need a little bit of clarity. How many canopies are there? There's this one on the corner of Valley and Bloom.
Two, one on 34 Valley Road and one proposed for 36 Valley Road.
But wait a minute, looking at the pictures, there's this corner canopy here, right? And then there's a canopy here. What's that?
That's our progress application.
Right.
So you're gonna have canopies that don't have an address and canopies that do?
To mark the specific entrances, one is the leasing office and one is the residential entrance.
And what is this then? What's this here then?
That is the entrance into 36 Valley Road, that's the resident entrance.
So that's the resident entrance and this entrance is not the resident entrance?
That's two.
There are two residents?
Two residents.
And one's gonna have a sign as proposed and one isn't? Okay. And then on, just to be perfectly clear here, on the Central Verde Street, whatever it is, there are one, two, three canopies, right?
We're just seeking a sign on the leasing office.
And you just want the plaques on the side of the leasing office?
Which is the other one.
This one or this one? This one, and nothing on this?
That is correct.
And you don't think that's confusing?
No. Because they're the ones with the signage.
But the ones that don't have any signage, how do people know what they are since, you know what I mean? So you have these two canopies here with no signs.
Well, the medallions are on both.
The medallions are gonna be on both of these. And here, and this one, this leasing office is gonna have a sign on the canopy.
The medallions are gonna be with the leasing office.
Okay, am I the only one who's confused here about exactly what's going where?
There's medallions on both buildings.
You're confused? There's, so here's Central Verde Road, whatever it is.
Yeah, I understand. I've seen this three times.
Okay, yeah.
There's medallions on both buildings across each street from each other?
Both of these buildings have medallions on the sides of the...
Right.
But there are two canopies here.
Only the one above the office.
Okay.
Right.
And is there any signage on the canopies themselves on the Central Verde? It's just the medallions?
No, no, there's Valley and Bloom above the, the leasing office.
It's proposed.
Proposed Valley and Bloom right here?
Right.
Yes.
As well as medallions?
And two medallions on either side of the...
Okay, and what's here?
On one of the canopy signs, it's the other Valley and Bloom with the two medallions.
I guess what Ms. Lockman's asking is why is there no signage on the other canopies? What is the purpose of the other canopies?
It seems weird, that's your...
You know, the applicant felt that it wanted one single identifier for each of the two buildings. So, you know, in keeping with, they wanted to be able to identify the buildings to put some marker specifically for the leasing office. That was very important for 34.
I understand, yeah.
And then also to mark one of the entrances for 36. They didn't feel the need to, to, to place signage all over the building, which is why they wanted to go with a subtle, a more subtle approach. But they did want some demarcation of the actual name of the building and this, and the actual number marking the building. And so they chose that particular entrance because they felt that it would get the most like visual traffic.
Yeah, quite frankly, the less signs, the better.
I agree, less signs are better, but certainly some symmetry.
And the medallions have the numbers which identify the building, which I think is what most people are going to use to figure out where they're going.
Exactly, and each building, what is the, the single identifying entrance which would be the most significant for purposes of placing signage? And they wanted to do something that was...
Yeah, I'm not anxious to have Valley and Bloom's plastered across...
No, no, I agree, I just wanted to be clear.
And purple lights.
Well, I'm not anxious...
If you want more, we're more than, no.
No.
Now, now you've got me confused again.
Yeah.
Both signs are on the same building.
No.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Wait a minute, as I'm looking down...
One's on the corner of Valley and Bloomfield.
That's 36.
That's 36.
That's 36 and here...
And 34 is the office building.
34 is on...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright, so it's on...
And they have...
The alleyway is on the second building.
It's Central Verde Drive, it's not, it's not an alleyway.
Yeah.
It's a major thoroughfare.
Just a question, is there a signage that says this is Central Verde Driver?
Well, there's, there's a street sign.
There is a street sign, okay.
There is a street sign.
And that'll be 34, the address, the street address will be Central Verde Drive, I would imagine, since...
Saying that it's anything else would just throw everybody else into full confusion.
Wouldn't it make sense, isn't it more confusing to ID one building and not the other building?
Well, we are identifying 34 and 36.
No, no, with the sign, Valley and Bloom. Don't you think it's more...
Well, it's all part of the same, it's all part of the same project, it's all part of the same...
But it's two separate buildings.
It's two separate buildings, but it's all part of the same operation, the same use. It's all for, for residential purposes, one for the leasing component of it and one for the actual, you know, residences. And so it's, it's all...
So the residence is just going in and out of that one door? They only, the residents only go in and out of that one door?
Well, what they're doing is that they wanted to separate the two buildings, but only wanted to create one sign for each building. So they, they didn't wanna go beyond that in terms of the proposed signage, but they wanted to indicate that there are two specific, two separate buildings with two separate entrances and they wanted to, to distinguish... entrances, and they wanted to distinguish them from each other. Because 34 is the leasing office, and they wanted that to be separately identified so that individuals aren't coming, as Ms. Wilkinson indicated, to 36 and looking for the leasing office, but then separately call out 36 as a way to fit in with the architecture of that building, call it out as its own separate building, and mark it as 36 at the entrance with the plaques.
Okay, let, let's try this for the benefit of everybody. Says proposed. Where is this? Where is the location of this exactly?
Yep.
And you can use the handheld mic that's on the table there.
Okay, so which one are you?
This one, this one right here.
It says proposed.
Yeah.
It does not note, it says main entrance. Existing, proposed. Where's that?
Okay, so that is the, where the concierge desk is located, where the management office is located.
That doesn't help anything. Where is it?
That's Centro Verde Drive. So if you go down Centro Verde.
Okay, this is on the street.
Right.
So if you're looking at this one, which, where?
If you're looking, if you're looking at this, when you come down this drive, it's right here.
Okay, so that's going down the street.
This is 34 Valley Road.
So this, this particular one, let's just be clear, this is on the side street, down the drive.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now, this image you sent, this is the other one you're proposing?
Yes, that's the corner of Bloom Field and Valley.
Okay.
Yep.
So this building is not going to have any name anywhere except the plaques?
Right.
And it'll just have the.
This is a business right here. This is Sayola Restaurant.
No, 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 this one is showing.
So we're talking about here, here, here?
No, we're talking about something completely different.
So what's?
She asked me another question. I'm sorry, yeah, this is Sayola, and then this is the 36. That's the entrance, that's the resident entrance, that's the 6. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. This is, and has nothing, it's going to have the.
Well, they have their name up there now.
Who has what name?
Sayola. This is a restaurant, so Sayola has their name.
That's this. And this is the resident entrance?
We can't hear you. This is Sayola Restaurant entrance, right here.
With the canopy?
With the canopy.
Okay, oh.
And this is the resident.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, you got that? There you go.
That's probably what was confusing, that you see all of these canopies and you don't really know what they are.
And where's the signage for the restaurant, then?
It's, it's on the building.
It's on the building?
Yes.
You can't, that's an old picture. Sayola just opened. So that picture.
Are you clear?
I guess I am. Yeah.
I think they need signs.
It just seems.
Right. Part of the problem here is that there are no signs identifying what these buildings are or where, and so that's part of the problem. We literally have to go by a description of the buildings.
Having, having gone through the first floor of both buildings at one time, looking for the leasing office to, I was confused. So yes, you do need signs.
And you probably need a sign in your main lobby saying that the leasing office is around the corner. Just saying. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Doesn't peer counselor, I think we kind of understand, there's been enough explanation. Does anybody have any general comment about this application? Anything you want to add?
Not at this time.
All right. I don't really have a problem with the overall application. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the signs as proposed. They're going to be in accordance with the modifications that were recommended by the HPC. The drawings need to be redone. Colors aren't really clearly indicated on here, unless I've missed them. I've been looking through them again to see, but the colors and, and what's going to be on the medallion signs, what the color of the letters are on the canopy signs, that kind of detail needs to be added. The revised medallions without the additional lettering needs to be, needs to be cleared up. Anything else, Janice, that needs to be?
No, I don't have anything to add.
And our usual conditions. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I do, I do, yeah, if you could just take it off the board and fold it up.
Next on our agenda is the application for Raymond, and I'm going to screw up the name again.
Actually, Greg.
Greg. Great way to spell it. I would have never guessed.
Mr. Chairman, Alan Tremulak appearing on behalf of the applicant. My client has a, this is a simple minor subdivision, which really just involves a lot line adjustment. My client is delayed with a work emergency, so he'll hopefully be here later. And so I would hope to proceed with the 448 Washington Avenue application.
Okay.
At this time.
That's fine with us.
May I proceed?
Yes. And I imagine we have some exhibits?
Yes.
That have been pre-marked?
Sure. For the record, A1 is the application, A2 is the certification of taxes paid, A3 is the proof of publication, A4, the affidavit of service, A5 is a survey of the minor subdivision plat prepared by Purnesti Surveying dated May 15, 2017. A6 is the two-page drawing set prepared by John Guadagnoli Architects dated June 1, 2018. A7 is the report from the planning department dated June 21, 2018. And A8 is the engineer's report dated July 13, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alan Tremulak appearing on behalf of the applicant, Mitchell McGregor, who is the contract purchaser of the property, which is the subject of this application. This is an application for minor subdivision approval and a lot width variance for the property located at 448 Washington Avenue in the R1 zoning district. Property is 100 feet wide, contains an existing single-family home located to the westerly side of the lot. We're seeking subdivision approval to create two 50-foot lots and to construct a new single-family home on the subdivided parcel on the easterly side of the property. The board will undoubtedly recall that earlier this year, we appeared before the board with a similar application to subdivide the property, initially seeking a 45-foot wide lot and a 55-foot wide lot, which we subsequently amended to seek two 50-foot lot widths, as well as two additional variances. This application is admittedly somewhat similar to that application, but sufficiently different so as to not implicate any concerns regarding res judicata. And I say that for the following reasons. The prior application, in addition to seeking a lot width variance to permit 50-foot lot widths, also involved two other variances related to the existing house. One for a non-conforming side yard on the westerly side and another for the width of the house, existing house width rendered non-conforming if the application were approved. The plans that are before you this evening provide for the elimination of those two additional variances by removing the existing porch on the westerly side of the existing house, which then allows for the side yard to be conforming and also for the width of the existing house to be conforming, assuming the application is approved. In addition, the plans provide for a much more substantial setback for the proposed new house on the easterly side to pull that as far away from the adjoining house, which by the way, has only a two-foot non-conforming setback adjacent to our property. So, for those reasons, you know, this is a, this is a similar but significantly different application than the one we were denied several months ago. And I should note for the record that that denial was due to a split vote. Four members in favor, four members opposed, which resulted in the failure for us to obtain a majority and for the application to therefore be denied. I have two witnesses to present this evening. My first witness will be John Guadagnoli, who prepared the plans that are before you, and then our second witness will be Peter Steck, who will provide professional planning testimony in support of the application.
And the applicant's attorney. I'm not a lawyer, but I did ask a few folks and so forth. I understand that there was a case called Lochner that set the precedent for situations like this, where a site complies with all aspects of zoning except for frontage. In other words, all the setbacks, everything is okay. And, you know, the interpretation that I have says that the planning board is effectively required to approve if it meets all requirements of zoning with, with the exception of lot size or width, all the setbacks. And I'm wondering if you've got some advice to give us on that? That might assist us in moving the application forward a little faster.
Before responding, I'll ask Mr. Tremulak, what's your position on that?
Well, I'm very familiar with the Lochner case, but the Lochner case deals with situations where you have existing lots that are deficient and whereby, as a matter of law, the two lots can be merged together to eliminate the nonconformity. That's not the situation we have here, where we have a conforming 100-foot lot. We're not seeking to merge anything, we're actually seeking to divide that.
So it doesn't, it does not apply then?
It does not, in my opinion.
The better question really is whether or not this application is barred by res judicata. And I think Mr. Tremulak has indicated that there are sufficient differences between this application and the prior application that would make it, that would, that would render res judicata not applicable. I, I'm using a term, a legal term, I don't know if everyone knows what that is.
Probably not, too.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
If you elaborate on that.
So, it's fair to say that lawsuits, using them as an example, seek to determine factual issues. It's true that the purpose of any lawsuit is to get to a judgment, and that judgment essentially creates a precedent of some kind. Res judicata basically says that once that has been established, once that predicate, that, that judgment has been established by a judicial determination, that's it. You can't question it, you can't bring it to the, you can't challenge it, it's over and it's done with. One could argue similarly to this situation, that the application, the denial of the last application, that's it. We're done, it was a decision of the board. The difference, however, is that, and that would be res judicata, the difference is that if the applicant or an applicant comes before you with a, with an application that is sufficiently different from the one that was previously denied, it is within your power to say, this is sufficiently different as to render res judicata not applicable to this situation. Mr. Tremulak's arguments at the beginning were intended to convince you that this application is sufficiently different from the previous denied application, so that the judicial concept of res judicata would not be applicable, and that they, the applicant, could proceed with this application tonight before you. Could you re-identify what the elements are of this application that makes it sufficiently different for the benefit of the board and the public?
Primarily two. The elimination of the porch on the existing house, which eliminates two of the three variances that were being sought in the prior application. So we're going from an application that implicated three variances to one that just demands one. To me, that alone makes it sufficiently different. And then the second planned modification is the relocation of the new house, proposed new house on the subdivided parcel, pulling that further away from the adjoining neighbor so that it's now set back 10 feet. The requirement is only six feet, but we're moving it 10 feet away from the eastern property line, whereas the prior application, I believe, proposed a six-foot setback. So those are the differences, primary differences. I also think the house is slightly smaller, but I don't know, okay, slightly smaller, but that those, the combination of those changes make this a different application than the one that the board previously considered.
Do we need advice of our counsel on this, or is this just a judgment that the board itself can make?
It's a decision that the board makes. It's a factual determination. If you believe that the application is sufficiently different from the prior application, then res judicata is said not to apply. However, if you see that this application is so similar to the prior application that res judicata ought to prevent it from going forward, that's your determination as well.
And to just reiterate again, what is the variance left?
The single variance that we're seeking tonight is to permit lot widths of 50 feet for the two lots, whereas the ordinance requirement is 60 feet.
So back to my question about Lochner. Lochner would apply if this was already subdivided. If it was already two lots that you're, or four lots, let's say. Let's say it was actually four lots and you're taking two and two. But it doesn't apply if you actually divide it? Because I think both are considered a subdivision, so I'm not entirely.
Lochner, again, Lochner is a merger case. Lochner would not typically apply it in a subdivision. I think if you had two lots, if this, if this property consisted of two 50-foot lots, one having the house and one being vacant, that, that might result in those two lots being merged as a matter of law because they don't comply with the zoning requirement and the tax collector. Very often, this is done by a tax assessor, who can merge the lots.
Weren't these lots originally merged years ago? Wasn't, were they merged in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, they had a different street address.
I don't, I'm not aware of that, but maybe.
Okay.
I had personal knowledge.
So, yeah. They had different, they had different street address. They were actually considered two different tax lots at one point in history. This and, not only this site, but other property on the street also. So, I think that we should hear the application. We can revisit this at the end of the application if we find it necessary. And I think we have the issues framed in terms of the prior hearing on a prior application. So, Mr. Tremulak?
Will you proceed? My first witness, as I mentioned, is John Guadagnoli.
Sir, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
John Guadagnoli Architect PC. Mr. Chairman, offering Mr. Guadagnoli as an expert in field of architecture, and he's testified before this board on a number of prior occasions.
We've accepted him in the past, we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Guadagnoli, did you prepare the subdivision of the site plan submitted for this application? Yes. Am I correct that you also prepared the plan that was submitted in connection with the prior application? Yes. You did not testify, though, in connection with the prior application. That's correct. Yes, sir. All right. Now, I'm going to ask you to review your plans for the board. Now, I'm going to ask you to review your plans for the board. Do you have, are you able to display the plans on the projecting screen?
If it pleased the board, I could, or we can put it on the platform, whichever you prefer. I have both ways.
Put it on the screen.
Screen?
Give me a minute.
It's just the plan's elements? You should know that. Site map? Why does it only say one page, one of one?
John, why don't you begin by discussing what currently exists on this property?
The existing property, which is shown here on the left side, consists of the, of a one-family residence. It's located on the extreme, what is that, western side of the property. It's only 4.9 feet from the property line currently. This side wing of it is mostly porch or enclosed porch. The rest of it is vacant. It's 100 feet wide and 140 or 150 feet, depending on which side you look at it at. And as you can see, it's about, it's just under 25 feet from the front property line. And it's, this is the lot which we wish to subdivide. So by subdividing it in half, it's 50 and 50, we result in, and I really can't read this on the, on the screen as it's shown, but we result in a property line right in the center between the two buildings, but we have a shared driveway between them. That shared driveway goes up to a, an access tarmac, if you will, that allows us to go into the existing garage, which is interesting. The existing garage pertains to the existing house, but because we're subdividing it, that old garage will now become part of the new house, and a new garage will be built for the old house. So in the end, we still have two two-car garages, but we did kind of a flip. And this common driveway has a space where cars can go in and out and back out easily. The new house is about 2,300 square feet of space. It has a front that is set back further than the existing house. It's, on average, slightly back from the average of the houses on the same side of the street. It complies with all setbacks and height. It has 10 feet versus six required on the western side, and it has, I believe it's 13 feet on the western side. Part of that 13 feet is driveway, of course. And it's a three-bedroom house, two-story, three-bedroom house with some bonus space up in the attic and a basement.
John, the property is in the R1 zoning district.
Correct, yes.
And what is the, what are the side yard requirements?
Six feet on one side, and I believe it's 10 on the other.
Okay. And you're proposing a 10-foot setback on the easterly side of the new house, correct?
Correct.
You know the setback, your plan shows the house on the adjoining property, which comes pretty close to the property line. Do you know what the setback is, is that?
It's just over two feet. It's 2. something. I don't remember what the fraction is, but it's just over two feet.
Which would be a non-conforming setback for the adjoining property.
Correct, correct, yes. And so, and the, now what we're doing is on the existing house, in order to be more compliant, because obviously by making the subdivision, we've created a, an issue with, you know, the setback on the right was only 4.9 square, 4.9 feet. By eliminating this side porch, the setback is now more than what we need. I can't read it.
13.9?
13.9, thank you, Mark. 13.9 feet now, and on the other side, it's...
That would be 9.02.
9.02, where only six would be required. So we exceed each one. The other thing is the, you know, you can't, a house can't be more than 65% of the lot width. So by elimination of this porch, we now comply with that as well. Whereas before, we would not have complied due to the subdivision. And the only thing, this house is pre-existing, the setback is pre-existing. I think it's 24.8 feet, which will have no effect on what we're doing.
So by eliminating, by removing the porch, you eliminate two of the three variances that were involved in the prior application?
That's correct.
And are you proposing any additions onto the existing house?
Yes. On the back, we're proposing a small addition on the back in order to sort of compensate for this. But here, in the back, there is no issue of setback or lot width, I'm sorry, building width or height or anything, so it's fully compliant.
I have a question. Is the existing garage, that is out of compliance, isn't it, with the setbacks?
Yeah, this garage here?
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it does not meet the six-foot setback required for an accessory structure in an R1 zone. That's right. It's pre-existing, you know. However, the new garage does comply.
Okay.
Mr. Guadagnoli, this is a, just a colorized version of the A1 sheet that we received?
This, yes, yes, it is.
Correct what you're referring to?
All I did was put some green on the, on the grass, that's all.
Yeah, thanks.
I believe the plan also shows some existing trees and other vegetation on the easterly side of the property.
Yeah.
Put that out.
Yeah, a number of trees have to be removed for reasons of, well, two of them are right where the driveway is going to be. One of them is right where the curb cut is going to be. And then two of them are just simply going to be in this alleyway, and they just won't, won't work. So we're going to have to replace about six trees.
Well, what about the trees on the easterly side? By pulling the house 10 feet away from the side yard, the trees that you're showing on the left-hand portion of the plan, isn't it likely that those existing trees and other vegetation that's shown there will be...
Well, that's a question for an arborist, but by moving the building over, yes, the likelihood of them being preserved is far greater. One has the question, though, when we're digging for a foundation, what kind of damage will happen to the roots, that sort of thing. But yes, certainly the chance, I was being very conservative. If we can save a couple of these trees, fine, we'll keep them. I have no desire to take them down, but, you know, it's a question of reality, you know.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so the proposed house, I think you may have answered this, so forgive me. The proposed house situated on the plan comply, the footprint complies with all the zoning requirements in the R1 zone?
Yes, setbacks, height, and coverage, yes.
What is the height of the proposed new house? And maybe you might want to go on to the...
Yeah, the next page, next sheet.
...second sheet, which shows the architectural plans.
The building is 32.5 square feet. Yeah, I can't read this, that's why. We'll go to the next drawing, which shows particulars of the house. Thank you.
And again, this is a colorized version of A2?
That's right, correct. We just simply colored the house. It just shows some greenery on the bottom to give you a sense of the picture.
Was that photo included on A2?
I was going to say, that's not included on A2.
You don't have that? Sheet A2?
Nope.
Not the picture.
Not the picture.
Okay. This particular plan is, yeah, this is what the house exactly looks like, was this particular plan I used. I have built this house from one other spot, and this is a photograph of the house as it actually looks built.
So we need to put that in evidence?
Yes, that's got to be separately marked.
We'll provide a biography of that.
Well, let's mark it for the time being, at least.
Okay.
I thought it'd be a good visual aid, so you could actually see the house in action later.
Okay, so that, we'll mark that as A9. What's that sheet number, A2?
A2, A2.
Is there a revision date for this exhibit?
Mine's dated June 1st.
Well, that's what I have. I was just curious if this had a different date on it.
It's the June 1st plan, apparently, but with the photo superposed.
This was put on because for presentation. It doesn't show, you know, it doesn't show anything technical, it's just an image.
Right, but it's changed the exhibit.
Yeah, I just, I want to be clear about what you're going to refer to and what's been marked in evidence.
Okay.
And I'm sure you're putting it up there to give us some indication, some evidence of what the fully-built house will look like.
Show me to pass the board and around to the board members?
Sure.
It's on that board.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's on that board, right.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm going to mark, if you can give this to me at the end, I just want to justify.
That board is exactly this.
This will be...
A9.
A9.
Mr. Tremulak, I'm pretty sure Mr. Steck is going to get into this. Could you just reiterate, if you remember, of the properties on that block, how many are conforming for the variance that you're seeking and how many are not?
Well, Mr. Steck is definitely going to provide that testimony. I'm happy to answer that, but I think he'd rather enter that. You're talking about this particular block on the southerly side of Washington Avenue?
Yes. I remember there was some assertion of conformity.
Well, Mr. Steck will testify, I believe there are nine lots on that side of the street, and five of those lots, existing lots, are currently nonconforming. There are, I believe, four lots across the street on the northerly side of Washington Avenue that are also nonconforming, including two lots that are, I believe, 37 and 1/2 feet in width. And again, Mr. Steck has an exhibit, which he'll discuss with the board, where he's identified, I think, approximately 140 lots in his study area, and that of those 140 or so lots, I believe, 68% of the lots are nonconforming. But again, I defer to his testimony, which you'll hear very shortly. Yes? Can you just briefly review the elevations and the floor plans for the proposed house?
The floor plan features a small entry porch, just a small, you know, just a little land, a glorified landing, you know, in front, an entrance with a closet, and in the front there's a living and dining room, and just behind that is a kitchen with an open plan to a little small great room. And the stairs going up are in front, you know, just going straight up. And there's a small powder room on the first floor, and a little pantry there, too. And the kitchen's just a simple L with an island, and, you know, there's sliding doors out to a little landing and a few steps down to a terrace, a little patio thing. Upstairs are one, two, three bedrooms, a laundry room, and two bedrooms, bathrooms, one a master and one like a common. And like I said before, there was, as I said, there's a stair going up to a kind of a common, just a little common area. There's a limitation on how big you can make a finished attic space. I believe it's 60% of the floor below it, and we more than comply with that. So we're smaller than 60%. So we just did that as a little loft or a little office or something they could use. There's no door or anything to it, it's just an open loft. And, you know, it's kind of a neo-Victorian, you know, it's just got a peak and, you know, here's the front door on the left, it's kind of asymmetrical, and it just has a few peaks and valleys to make it interesting. And, you know, it's, it's a two-story, you know, mini Montclair house. That's all, that's all it is. It's sided.
And the height of the house, again, I think you may have mentioned it before?
32.5 feet off the grain.
I think the plans indicate 33.
Sorry, 33.5, which 35 is allowed.
All right, so the height complies with the...
Yes, it does.
What's the square footage?
2,360-something, yeah.
Does the house have a basement?
Yes, it's got a full basement, yes. That's where the utilities are, so. Yeah, this, this house exists already on Gray Street in Montclair.
I'm sorry, what street?
Gray.
Gray Street, oh, okay.
This house is already on Gray, yeah. And there, too, the lots are undersized. This design was done specifically for an undersized Montclair lot, you know, where we need to comply but still have a house that's worth buying.
How tall is the ceiling in the basement?
I believe that, they're like eight feet. They're nothing special, just eight, you know, eight feet. But then there's a beam down the middle, so that lowers it under the beam, but the average height is eight feet, yeah.
Is the Gray Street house next to number 24? Is that, was, that was the subdivided?
Yes, and we took the porch off of that.
Yes.
Right, we took the porch off of that.
I've been in that house.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Right, it was a few years ago we did.
I remember it well, yep.
The reason why I use this is because the realtor told me that everybody went in there, said it reminded them of the house they grew up in. So they, so I like to use it if I can.
The Gray Street lot was nonconforming?
The reason why I use this is because the realtor told me that everybody went in there, said it reminded them of the house they grew up in. So they, so I like to use it if I can.
The Gray Street lot was non-conforming, but the two lots there were non-conforming? I thought they were conforming.
Subdiv... Oh, no, we need a variance, I don't regret.
Can we swear in this witness, please?
Well, I think...
It's part of the, it's becoming part of the record.
Yeah, I appreciate it. If John doesn't know the answer, we may, we may have you sworn in, but... I believe that Gray Street was a conforming subdivision.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
My, not my...
I think it was conforming.
If it was, you'd have to lock the porch off the one house to make that conforming, kinda like this.
But the lot size in that location, the lot sizes were conforming, because I think I'd seen some assertions about the approval of that subdivision, that it was a non-conforming lot that this board had approved the non-conforming lot and then didn't approve the Washington Street. But my remembrance, and that's why I asked, was that those particular lots were conforming.
I don't recall the particular...
And I'm not so sure about that either, but for the purpose of this hearing, I don't think it's relevant.
No, no.
There's no precedent.
Mr. Quagliagnoli, in choosing this particular design for this house, did you take into account the size and the design of the existing houses on that side of Washington?
No, much so. This house is narrow in front, but deep. And by making it narrow in front, it is more diminutive vis-à-vis the other houses. Most of the houses on that block are wider in front, but shallower. But by turning it this way, it seemed to me, salutes, it seemed to be the perfect, you know, the perfect fit, given the narrowness of the lot.
And in your opinion, does this house, in terms of its size and design, blend in with the existing streetscape?
Most certainly, yeah. It's two stories, like almost every other house on the block. It, you know, it's got a single window, a single window. It's very, like, don't look at me modest. It's, that's why we chose this, this really, you know. And also on the other sheet, sheet A1, you could see it in comparison to the other houses on the street.
Why don't you back to that?
Yeah, Martha, please.
If you can point that out to the board.
I mean, it's a small picture, but it's at the bottom of the page, because I did a photograph of each house on the street, two on the left, two on the right, to, in order to make that very comparison. All right, you see down here, our house is here in the middle, and the houses to either side are like what they look like in approximate comparison, you know, to us. And, you know, here you can see us, and you can see the other house in plan, you can see that we are not really anything dramatically different from those around us, you know. You can see the house tile left is the one that has the projection of, that's very close to the property line. Or else, we're pretty, pretty close.
In terms of the size and also the setback, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the setback, we're, you know, just slightly behind everybody else, just for compliance, because we have to, it's a 25 feet or the average of everyone else, and I think we're 26 feet something, you know, just to, we stayed back just a little further, and as far as the footprint and shape and, you know, lot, the way we covered the lot, it's pretty much in line with everybody else.
No further questions for this witness.
At the bottom of that drawing, you have neighboring properties.
Thank you. So for the properties, and you've got the drawing of the house interposed, no, 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 over, yeah. You've got the pictures and you've got the drawings, are, does that reflect a true scale?
Yeah, what I did for that was I used like a scale, I know a door, like the door is six foot eight or seven feet, depending on the house. So when the picture came to seven feet, I stopped, I froze it, and I said, okay, if the door is seven feet, the rest of the house is in proportion. You know what I mean? And I did that with each...
So that's the way the roof lines look?
Yeah, exactly.
Will look once this proposed house is constructed.
Right, correct. The relative heights are similar, yeah.
I have a question about the lighting. So now you're gonna have two garages in the back, and are you, are they gonna be lit up?
Generally not, I mean, just maybe a light over, just a light over the garage doors, you know.
So that you would place the light by the garage door so that it would not interfere with the neighbors?
Well, the neighbors have garages here as well. So the only light would be like a gooseneck or some other thing, a fixture above the door only. I mean, they basically shine at each other. The nearest neighbor who could see this would be like way up here, you know, at the front of their property. These are garages here that you see.
Yep, okay.
So they're really, and there's not much disturbance, to speak of it. This outline represents the house next to this one, so you can see the distance is quite a bit, you know, so. And the light's small, it's just enough to light up, you know, at night, like it'll be on a timer or a motion sensor. That's, it won't be always lit, but that's up to the owner, too. I mean, I can't testify for that, but...
Other questions? Mr. Quagliagnoli, you said something about replacing trees. Were you saying that you were gonna comply with the tree ordinance?
I think we have to, all right, quite, yeah. But I can't promise how many are in the end gonna come down, because, again, it depends on, you know, what happens when we're constructing, but one can go back and see what was there and, you know, make us plant whatever, you know, we took away.
So regardless of how many come down, you will replace them in kind for the tree ordinance?
Yes, we will, yes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Tom?
On the existing garage, is the, are the doors gonna stay in the same location?
No, they're gonna be moved to the side. Yeah.
So do you need all that pavement in front of the existing garage?
The only reason why we did that was to provide a parking, like a parking and, I guess, a parking spot, you know. I think, I know we have to have two for the, I suppose we don't need that, that's true, I just did it for convenience, but we don't have to, I just did...
And if you did have lighting on the garage, it'd be over the doors, so that they, the lights would have facing each other?
That's correct, yes.
Is the existing garage a two-car garage?
Barely, yes, it is, but it's a little tight, but it is what it is, yeah, yeah. It is a two-car garage, yes.
Other questions from the board? Questions from the public of this witness concerning his testimony? Forward, identify yourself for the record.
Milton Horowitz, 17 Madison Avenue, Montclair.
Is the light on, on the...
Press the button.
Milton Horowitz, 17 Madison Avenue, Montclair.
Great.
My question, it was raised here, I'd like to ask you, before I ask a question, I'd like to ask about, if it's permitted at this point.
Mm-hmm.
It was raised about the, the number of homes were non-conforming, about 140, I believe the number was mentioned, and 68%. Am I able to ask a question about that?
Well, that came from you, Mr. Tremulak, right?
It did, I think it's more appropriate, actually, for the testimony and any questioning for Mr. Steck to handle that, and he will be the next witness, he'll be able to provide...
Well, Mr. Steck did speak to it at the time, so it's on the record.
Well, the attorney actually spoke to it, so technically, it's not testimony.
Okay.
Well, that's attorney comment.
Well, that's the win.
Mr. Steck will, I think Mr. Tremulak indicated that Mr. Steck would cover that in his testimony, and then you can ask him.
Okay, so it's not appropriate at this time?
Right.
In the next witness.
Thank you.
Leonard Robinson, homeowner and homeowner for 444 Washington Avenue. And my question to you is, how far back, front to back, will that new structure go? Midway? Is it gonna be like midway to the back of 444 Washington Avenue? My concern is, it's gonna totally overshadow the backyard, if you can elaborate on that and explain that to me?
Which house is 444, I'm sorry?
On the east side.
This guy?
Yes.
Okay.
So how far back is the house structure?
Well, the two fronts of the houses will be almost the same, with the new house being slightly behind yours. Here would be the back of your house, right there where my finger is, and so this would be back a bit further.
Back a bit further, six feet, 10 feet?
Oh, about 18 feet.
About 18 feet. So I'm just concerned that the height, the two-and-a-half story height, is this gonna cover any sideline that we have?
If you go to, let's see, A1?
That's it.
And then at the bottom, you've got not, no, back where you were originally pointing, where you wanted to the first time, right. Doesn't that show the lineup of the properties?
Yes.
And how the configurations of the current and the proposed properties lineup?
Yeah, the two fronts, the new house juts back behind your house.
Yeah, so it's gonna be protruding back further than most of the homes in that area.
However, just keeping some mind something, north is down. That means east is that way. So the sun comes up at the east here, it swings around to the south, and it sets in the west. So you have, your house will not be affected by a shadow until, you know, 5:30 in the afternoon, when the sun is on in the west and just casts a shadow, but if not, you get sunshine from morning until most of the afternoon. We are on the, you know, we're on the northwestern side of your house. So very, you will not have sun blocking your house.
Okay.
Sorry, a building will not block sun from your house, it won't.
Well, yeah, that's the main thing, that we're, our concern is, okay, with the house coming in, I see you move from 6 to 10 feet out from the side of the house. We have, that square that you see protruding out, that is our sun, again, with the sun porch that we use all the time.
Right.
That was just the concern, that now we just have nothing of view at all. And that was our main concern, especially, we lose that, now we lose a portion of the back as you go deep with the home as well. You follow me?
Well, if the board would allow, we don't mind sliding the house forward a little, but I have to comply with the setback of everyone else, I could scooch it forward a bit.
There's trees all along that property, almost as high as the house.
Yes.
As they exist right now.
No, those are, those get, those get, right. Those trees, you go there now, they're, they're turning up. Thank you.
Other questions from the public of this witness? Okay, Mr. Tremulak? One more?
Anna Duran, 442 Washington Avenue. I just wonder, you're planning to keep the garage, or are you gonna actually, you're gonna be able to keep that garage and move the doors?
Yeah, swing the doors.
I mean, that's like a really old garage.
Yeah, I don't deny that it's gonna need work, yeah.
How are you gonna, you're gonna swing the doors to the side?
Yeah, we're gonna make new openings and put beams over them and then block up the old opening.
So you're not gonna move the garage?
No.
Take it down at all?
No, that's not the plan, according to the owner, no.
What happens if you keep, when you start working on it, you find that there are structural issues, since it is quite an old garage?
Then a determination is made, is...
Is that like something I would have to go to the planning board, I guess? It's a question to everyone.
Here's what is, if...
Some structural issue? Yeah. So they have to rebuild it?
If they have to rebuild it, it has to be rebuilt in exactly the same place. If they tear it down, then they have to comply with the new ordinance, which means they have to move it six feet away from the property line. But if they, now, if it's viable, if, in other words, if it's, they're spending way more money to fix it than to just replace it, then probably they will replace it, and if they do, they have to be compliant and move it away from the property line by six feet, and then they don't even have to come before the board, they could just get a permit for that.
Other questions from the public?
Peter Stack, please.
Sir, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Using that microphone, would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
My full name is Peter G. Steck. Home and office is 80 Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey, and I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
So Chairman, offering Mr. Steck as an expert professional planning, he testified...
We'll accept him. We're very familiar with Mr. Steck.
Mr. Steck, you testified in support of the prior application involving this property, correct?
I did.
So you're obviously familiar with the property, you're also familiar with the Montclair zoning ordinance and master plan?
I am.
Okay, and have you performed an analysis regarding the lot width variance, which is being requested by the applicant?
I have.
Okay, can you discuss your findings and conclusions and report your prepared, et cetera?
I can, I have a handout that might be helpful.
A10, John?
Yes, A10.
I have extra copies, so I could put some more in there.
Peter needs to learn how to make slides.
Now, do I have one?
There you go.
There's one with notations on it, hold on a second. Oh, I have, I do have one, I got lucky. So just for the record, I'm gonna refer to this in my testimony, but I'll tell you what it is. This was prepared by me today, and in the upper left-hand section is a portion of the tax maps. You'll see some bold red lines, and I had to amend it, but basically it goes along orange, jogs into Madison, jogs down partway on Gardner, and then cuts across. Everything below that, or east of that, requires a 60-foot minimum lot width. Now, I'll grant you that some of the houses on Orange Road are in a two-family zone, but that zone in that location also requires the 60-foot lot width. There are two types of dots on this. Anything with a red dot is substandard to the 60-foot minimum. The solid red dot means that it is 50 feet or less, so period. The dot with the, the circle with the, I guess the white dot and the red dot, means that it's less than 60 feet, but it's more than 50 feet. To the right is a, upper right-hand corner is a rendition of the proposal, in dark black are the existing structures... black are the existing structures, in gray are the proposed structures. Below that is an aerial photograph, uh, from Google Earth, where I've just, um, superimposed approximately the property line. Lower left is a 2015 infrared satellite photo, that shows the approximate outlines and, of the, let's call it the first-tier homes on Washington Avenue, and to the right of that is a panorama photo that I took this morning, um, to show, right in the center portion is where the new lot is being proposed. And again, uh, that accurately depicts it, except it's a panorama, so it's kinda stretched, the center portion is stretched. Back to the beginning, um, uh, this property, a- as you can see from the tax maps, is a hundred feet wide, and at least on the south side of Washington Avenue, in that block, it's the deepest property in that block, so it, it is the largest property in that lot, that block, it is the deepest property, and it's one of two properties that have a, a hundred-foot, uh, frontage and width. As you know, the property is already developed, um, if you face the property, in the left rear is the two-car garage, and the driveway is on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side is the existing dwelling that does have a sun porch that extends into the side setback. And, as you know, the, the lot does, um, uh, increase slightly in elevation as you go from the, from the road up to it. The application, as described, is to remove the sun porch, which is on the right-hand side of the existing dwelling, uh, to construct a new porch in the rear, and by doing that, two variances will be removed, uh, one of them is the, uh, the side yard encroachment on the west side of the existing dwelling, and the percentage of, of lot width that will, a house of the lot width which will be conforming. The applicant will, is proposing a single driveway that's internal to the property along the proposed subdivision line, producing two fifty-foot wide lots, construct a new house, uh, that is more than comfortably within the building envelope, uh, as noted before, on the east setback, instead of the minimum of six, the applicant is proposing ten feet, and the applicant is gonna propose a new garage, uh, for the, the existing dwelling, and retain the existing garage, although, as indicated, reorient the access, uh, to the interior, uh, for the shared driveway. This differs from the prior application, in my opinion, in fundamental ways. Uh, the prior application, um, had a wider house, existing house, which triggered two variances, uh, those two are removed, um, the applicant has reduced the footprint of the new dwelling, and has shifted the proposed new dwelling to the west, uh, to be more than the minimum setback. In my opinion, these are fundamental differences, uh, that would, uh, warrant consideration of this application on the merits. Part of my, uh, analysis was to look at the, uh, lot pattern in the area, uh, most of the houses are single-family, but, uh, on the opposite side of Washington Avenue in Lot 21, even though that's a hundred-foot wide lot, I labeled it as, uh, non-conforming, because that has six dwelling units, that's a condominium, so, uh, it seems to be, would be unfair to characterize that as a conforming lot, uh, because of the five, um, uh, six, excuse me, the six dwelling units in the property. This analysis only looks at, uh, lot width, so there may be, for example, a lot in Block 4004, Lot 1, may indeed have more than sixty feet of frontage, but it's likely short in square footage, so I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm ignoring other non-conformities, um, and only looking in this analysis at the variance that we're seeking. The only variance we're seeking is for a lot width of sixty feet, fifty feet in lieu of the sixty-foot minimum. I, I'll, I'll tell you the statistics, uh, on, on this, um, that come out of this study of lot widths. On the south side of Washington, there are five of the nine lots, or fifty-six percent, are less than sixty feet.
Less than what, less than what?
Are, are less than sixty feet. If I looked at both sides of Washington Avenue, so the Washington Avenue corridor, uh, running from Willow Dale to Madison, ten of the seventeen lots, or fifty-nine percent, are less than sixty feet in width, and again, I'm including within that Lot 21 and Block 4004, because that's a, you know, that should be six lots, having six dwelling units. If, um, if I look at the, simply the block that we are within, Block 4003, uh, twenty of the twenty-six lots are less than sixty feet wide, that is seventy-seven percent. And if I look at the whole area of analysis here, which is basically all of the lots east of the red solid line, uh, there are approximately a hundred and forty-three lots, and ninety-seven are less than sixty feet wide, that's, uh, sixty-eight percent. And again, I did make a distinction, as you can see from the diagram, that, uh, the vast majority of those lots are the solid red line, which means that they are exactly the same, fifty feet, or even smaller than the lot that we're proposing. So part of my analysis, uh, was to look at the master plan, and this is, um, a little more complicated than normal. Your current master plan is, you know, dated May, and then amended April 24th, 2017, and it really focused on circulation and commercial land uses. It did not specify, it didn't really study the residential, um, portion of the municipality. The last comprehensive master plan, and not, before I go there, and you have a very recent, uh, reexamination report, that's November 21, uh, 2016, that did not recommend any changes, uh, to the zoning pattern. The foundation for the lot width standard, in terms of planning, is the February 9th, 1987, master plan, that was the last one that actually addressed the residential component in the community, and, uh, this area was recommended for a, what it was termed then, a moderate-density, single-family area, and, two things are important, uh, in that description. The density, excuse me, the specific density is to be governed by the predominant density in the block, as determined by prevailing lot depths, and the minimum lot widths expressed in the standards for lot width map of the land subdivision ordinance, I'll go back to that in a minute, and then it said, recommended minimums range from sixty to a hundred feet, and then it says, lot widths less than sixty feet are discouraged, except where the surrounding area of land use influence shows a predominance of lots having widths of less than sixty feet. So, two, two things are important, in terms of the master plan, and again, we have to go back to eighty-seven, it was recommended, and it was at that time, that the standard for lot widths was a separate map that was part of the subdivision ordinance, not the zoning ordinance, and that's important, because in the eyes of the master plan, relief from the lot width standard was an exception or a waiver, it wasn't a variance at that time, and, and the standards for granting an exception or waiver are, are different, are less onerous than the standards for a variance. You don't have, for example, the negative criteria to prove, at that time, uh, when it was part of the subdivision ordinance. It has subsequently, that map has made, been made part of the zoning ordinance, so now it's a variance, but, the reason I'm bringing it up, is, that paragraph is important to me in terms of justifying satisfaction of the negative criteria.
Mr. Steck, uh, because this is important, um, you're saying that this particular paragraph was in the 1987 master plan?
Yes.
Did that carry over to any other subsequent master plan?
No, the, 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 the more recent master plan did not address the residential fabric of the community.
Were you the planner at that time?
Yes.
Do you, do you know why it didn't transfer over to, um, the, the more recent master plans?
Well, I didn't do the new plan, so I can't, can't tell you why it didn't address residential.
So just to be clear, it, it previously was part of the subdivision ordinance?
Yes.
It subsequently moved to the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
In, in what master plan did it shift over?
Uh, I don't think the master plan addressed that shift, it was done independently of the master plan.
Planner Tally, do you have any, uh, comment on that, just for the hi- history? Because...
Well, I would ask, uh, Mr. Steck, why the recommendation in the eighty-seven master plan was never implemented?
It, it was, it, it...
This is never, this was, it's fifty, this was never changed to fifty feet?
No, I, I'm, no, that, you're missing the point, the, the only point I'm saying, the minimum, anywhere in town, even for a thirty, you know, for some lots here, as you can see, were like thirty feet wide, the minimum was sixty feet. The point that I'm raising is twofold, it was considered at that time, a waiver or an exception, which has a lighter standard, easier to get, and number two, it said that where there is a predominance of lots having widths of less than sixty feet, you can make an exception, that's, that's, that was the standard at the time. Now, I, I, the, I would suspect that the motivation to put it in the zoning ordinance was to make it harder to get, but, the reason it was originally in the subdivision ordinance is that there's a rule that zoning, zones have to be uniform, and because Montclair had such a varied pattern of lot sizes, that uniformity rule was not part of the municipal land use law in terms of subdivision ordinance, it was only part of the municipal land use law in terms of zoning ordinances, so it was used at that time to, in a sense, segregate the R1 zone into fifty, sixty, a hundred different zones, and that did not violate the municipal land use law, because the uniformity clause was only in the zoning section of the municipal land use law.
Couldn't it have also been at that time, that there was a different philosophy about open space and, um, and subdivisions, the, the feeling that there, that subdivisions at that time were more beneficial to the community, and subsequently, subdivisions are seen as less beneficial?
I, I, I don't think you can say that one master plan said that subdivisions are bad, and the other one that said subdivisions are good, good subdivisions are good, bad subdivisions are bad, I mean, it's, it's a site-specific issue. The point that I'm raising is that, in the eyes of the master plan, relief from the sixty-foot standard was a, a lighter lift for an applicant, and they talked about that, s, less than sixty feet is discouraged, except where the surrounding area of land use influence shows a predominance of lots having widths less than sixty feet, so it, it gave some flexibility to the governing body in implementing the ordinances at that time.
And just to reiterate, that that did not carry then over to subsequent master plans, and you don't know why?
And I don't know why it wasn't, the, I, I don't know why it wasn't addressed in later master plans, because I was not responsible for them, I had absconded by then. So, uh, the only relief that we need, um, is the lot width issue, and, uh, in my opinion, there are two ways that this request can be justified, I think there is a C1 hardship, practical difficulties, uh, argument, because, uh, the lot is so oversized, again, it's not a hundred and twenty feet, but it is, on that side of the block, the largest in square footage, and the deepest, and there is only one other lot that's a hundred feet wide, and that lot does not have the depth, and consequently, not, does not have the square footage. The, these lots, uh, that are proposed exceed the minimum, um, lot size, which is six thousand square feet, uh, they exceed it by nineteen percent and twenty-three percent. While I think there is a hardship argument because of the predominance of smaller lots, and, and that, that standard, I'm not just making up, there's a provision in the municipal land use law, in Section 4055D-62, under the power to zone, that says, the zoning ordinance shall be drawn with reasonable consideration to the character of each district, and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and to encourage the most appropriate use of land. What that means to me is, you can't go into a two-family zone, an area with eighty percent two families, zone it one family, and say, that's the public policy, you have to be reasonable, because much of New Jersey, and in fact, Montclair, grew up before there was zoning, so you can't ignore the, the predominant pattern. I do think there is a C2, benefits that substantially outweigh the detriment, uh, support for this, and that's simply that, uh, the house is required to be proportional to the lot size, and, one standard that did carry throughout your master plan and the reexamination reports, is that you want some kind of consistency, harmony in the character of a neighborhood, and in my opinion, that goes two ways, uh, you, you, you want, it said, the way I look at it, is you want someone to drive down the street, and not know that there's something unusual going on there, that's, that's kind of the common sense test, in my point of view, and that, in my opinion, is represented, uh, that benefit is represented by this application. In terms of the negative criteria, there are a number of items I, uh, like to reference. These properties are larger in square footage, uh, than the zone, uh, these properties are gonna be developed with a, one driveway, a central driveway, from any direction, if you're on the rear of this property, now, I'll, except for the garage, the existing garage, which is substandard, but, in terms of any new construction, anybody looking at this property from either side, or from the rear, or from across the street, is gonna see something that's essentially a hundred percent conforming, in terms of setbacks, and, as indicated, uh, in my opinion, this is gonna repeat the, the established pattern in, in the neighborhood. There are benefits, because we're removing two variances, um, we are, have a central driveway, um, we have a house that, in my opinion, is reasonably compatible with the style of the neighborhood, and we have a easterly side yard that is ten feet in lieu of the six-foot minimum, uh, and, again, this house, the existing house on the property could be demolished, a bigger house could be built, that house could be six feet from the easterly property line, and, the, while the person will get less of a view, they're not protected from that, because that is a fully conforming, uh, zoning solution. is a fully conforming zoning solution. This applicant is going more than the minimum. They're pushing the house ten feet away. They are slightly under the maximum height limit. In my opinion, to have a new house constructed in the neighborhood is a vote of confidence in the neighborhood. This new housing is very expensive. The applicant wants a house that has the accoutrements of, that accommodates modern living. In my opinion, at the end of the day, the best way I can put this is that I think this is compatible, it is harmonious with the neighborhood. I think, once this is built, someone driving down the street will not blink, will not know that there's anything unusual. And because of that, I think there is both a C-one and a C-two argument that justifies this. I think it can be approved without substantial detriment to the public good. And I think it can be approved without substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
No further questions.
Questions from the board?
One question about, you read a passage from the municipal land use law?
Yes.
What was that in regards to, again?
You can't ignore existing conditions, and I'll read it again. "The zoning ordinance shall be drawn with reasonable consideration to the character of each district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses and to encourage the most appropriate use of land." And the example I gave, you can't go into an area that's all fifty-foot-wide lots and saying, "I want the minimum to be sixty." The ordinance, there is, if you make everything a, a parenthetical story, I was once approached by a newly-elected person in New Jersey who, after a planning board meeting, called me to the side. He says, "Mr. Steck, can't we make everything a variance?" And from a politician's point of view, who may like power, that's a great thing. Everybody has to come crawling to you for relief. But the answer is, that engenders unfair treatment. Zoning ordinances are supposed to be uniform and they're supposed to be reasonably related to the character of the district. This area predominantly is built with fifty-foot-wide lots. There are some sixties that came in later, but that's the pattern. In fact, some of the areas, as you can see, there are whole patterns of lots that are thirty-four feet wide, which is very narrow.
Right. And so, my question was, it sounded like that passage was talking about use, not necessarily lot width. Like, when I hear use in the MLUL, I think more of, you know...
Well, no, it's, "The zoning ordinance shall be drawn." Now, zoning ordinance is not just use. "With reasonable consideration to the character of each district." The character is not just use. This is predominantly single-family character. But the character is impervious coverage, height, setbacks, percentage of lot width. That's the character.
Just to clarify, this section that Mr. Steck quoted is really the enabling legislation that gives the municipalities the power to zone. It's called, isn't it called "The Power to Zone"?
The title of this section is "The Power to Zone."
So, that's what's cited when municipalities initially drew their zoning ordinances.
If you want to zone, there are certain rules, and that's one of the rules. So, if a municipality went to an area that was ninety percent fifty-foot-wide lots and zoned it for seventy-five foot minimum or seventy-foot minimum, Verona, excuse me, that, in my opinion, can be attacked as unconstitutional and is more to the point as in violation of the municipal land use law.
Thank you.
What was the zoning prior to eighty-seven for this area?
It was still an R-one zone, and there was a lot width map that was the same at that time.
At what point did the sixty-foot lot width kick in? Do you know?
I don't know for sure. I know that it, I don't know for sure.
Would it be safe to say that the non-conforming lots were pre-existing to when the sixty-foot lot width was mandated?
Yes. I would, if I would hazard a guess, and this is not going to help you, but I suspect it might have been in the fifties because the, Robert Edwards, who was the planner before me, he was the one that thought of this technique of having a lot width map in the subdivision ordinance. And it may have been in the fifties.
And finally, could you describe what you believe the public good to be from this subdivision? Not the private good to anybody, but the public good?
The public good is to provide, in my opinion, reasonable housing in an established neighborhood, walking distance to a commercial area. It produces housing that's harmonious with the area, and it gives you a guarantee that the existing house isn't going to be torn down and replaced with something that's out of character with the neighborhood.
Other questions from the board? Questions from the public of Mr. Steck.
Mr. Steck, could you address the issue of aging in place?
Can you identify yourself for the record first?
Oh, Kevin Ali. My name is Kevin Ali. I live at Twenty-Five Franklin Place. I grew up at Thirty-Five Granada Place, right around the corner from Four Forty-Eight. I want to know if you are familiar with the section of the master plan that speaks to the issue of aging in place and the benefit of zoning and issues that relate to senior citizens' lifestyle.
Well, this is not technically a senior citizen project, but the purpose of the project in the big picture is to allow the occupants of the existing house to stay there. And if you want to rush to the goal, that is the personal goal of the property owner.
I appreciate that.
The other aging in place of these long hearings that...
You're too sticky with this planning.
Other questions of Mr. Steck? All right, Mr. Tremulak.
That completes our application, Mr. Tremulak. No further questions.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this application? I already did questions for him. Kevin, can he have the handheld mic?
Pardon my seat, sir, but I have a little trouble getting up. My name is Samuel Dedman. I live at Four Forty-Eight Washington Avenue. I've been there for many, many years. I graduated from Montclair High School in nineteen thirty-nine. I'm ninety-seven years old. I'm a World War II veteran. Been married seventy-three years. That's nothing about me. About sixty-two years ago, I went to Howard Johnson's on Church Street and asked him, I told him I wanted to buy a house. He referred me to Sam Allen. Well, Sam Allen had two beautiful houses. One in Verona, one in Montclair. Verona had a lot, the owner just came from overseas, he had fruit trees. But the one in Montclair was in Montclair. I graduated in thirty-nine, so one of my boys did graduate from Montclair High School, too. You know the reason, good school. Anyhow, when he sold me the house, he said that one advantage of this house, Sam, is that you have two lots. As the time ever comes that you need to build a house, you have no problem. So, that was the selling point from Mr. Allen. Now, through the years, I checked right upstairs and I said, "Is that law still in effect?" They said, "Yes. You have a hundred-foot front. The law states that all you need is a fifty-foot front." So, I was happy. I said, "Well, if I ever need to build a house, I can." Unfortunately, I worked, I was in the Air Force with the B-17s, that instruments. I went into watchmaking. I worked for about eight jewelry stores, and they all eventually left. I was with Hankies in Montclair for twenty-seven years, but they closed too. And we had no pensions, no benefits or anything like that. So, I took out a reverse mortgage, and that's exhausted. So, I said to myself, "Now is the time to do what I was told sixty years ago, check my lot." And I did. And that's how it happened. So, I'm hoping, one other thing, about forty years ago, before the gambling came to Atlantic City, four of us pooled our money and we bought a house in Pleasantville, New Jersey. We fixed it up, we spent ten times more, we paid for it. But we had a lot. So, when gambling came in, about forty-seven years ago, we said, "Let's see what we can do with the lot." So, we did the same thing there we're doing now. I had a hundred, I had about a seventy-foot front, but my depth wasn't deep enough. So, we made plans, architects, drawings. I went before the planning, the board, just like you guys, not quite as distinguished. But I asked them, they looked at it, and they went in a conference, I came back and said, "Mr. Dedman, we have good news and bad news. The good news is, we approve your building a new house. The bad news is, you didn't have to go through all this, you're under the grandfather's law. And you apply, all you had to do was ask. I don't know what the grandfather law is, but you lawyers do. So, I don't know whether I'm under the grandfather law by buying this house over sixty years ago and the fifty-foot a lot applied to me or not. But that's one thing that I would hope that would be considered because, at the time I bought the house, fifty-foot lots were the greatest thing in the world. That's all you needed. Through the years, Montclair's changed the ordinance to sixty, and that's where we're stuck with. So, at this time, I'd just like to thank the board for considering our appeal. And thank you, and I hope that you will do by me like you did with, somebody mentioned density, a new house would be more density in the area. And I hope you do like me, like you did for the Lewis family, you took one house and put eight. On Grove Street, you took the Drew family, you put about six houses, they made a new street on Gates Terrace to put houses. So, as far as density, that's, I think, out the window. So, I hope, I'm thanking you in advance for hearing this, and I hope you will favor me and my ninety-seven years old with a good report. Thank you very much.
My name is Lloyd Abdurrahim. I served in the city of East Orange as a construction official and a zoning officer for more than thirty years, sat on the planning board for over twenty years. And I'd just like to add some, use my expertise and add a little something on behalf of Mr. Dedman. And also, I've worked with Ms. Tally and Mr. Steck over the years. One of the things that has not been mentioned, and I'd like to kind of put a feather in Ms. Tally's hat, and also may kind of lend some clarity to this, is the board, for a year, considered changing the ordinance. And if you look at your planning staff, they testified before you that the lot frontage requirements as they exist not only were hard for the zoning officer to apply, but they were outdated and antiquated. And the reason why, you've just heard by Mr. Steck's testimony, that that sixty-foot lot width is not consistent with the other lots in the area. But it's not just Washington Terrace. On Granada Place, there's only one conforming lot on the whole street. So, what happens is, you kind of have an ordinance that Mr. Dedman's asking for a variance for that really, they say unconstitutional, it's kind of like, from a planning standpoint, it's not right. Because what happens is, Ms. Tally came up with a model that reflects a lot of these streets and would have changed the lot frontage ordinances to reflect what's already there and be fair to everybody. Because what happens is, if someone comes in, say a senior wants to put a ramp on his house, he has to come and get a variance because it's non-conforming, because the whole lot's non-conforming. You want to put a deck in, you have to get a variance. It's non-conforming. So, I don't know why the board threw out her suggestion and model when they changed the ordinance, but remember that when Mr. Dedman came in, as normally is the case, and sat with planning staff, they kind of anticipated this change coming. So, they're like, "Oh, no problem, you're going to get approved, we're going to change the ordinance." Then all of a sudden, the board, you guys, kind of said, "Whoop, we're going to go the other way." So, in my professional opinion, and have seen these cases over and over, not only do I ask that you approve this case, but you also go back and consider the model that your planner has presented to you. Because a lot of times, when the boards don't listen to their professionals, it's not going to just hurt Mr. Dedman, but it's going to hurt all the other people that come behind him. You know, and it's not an issue of density or use or any, it's an issue of ten feet or five feet. But you're going to hear it over and over. So, in that, briefly, I just say, I agree with all the other testimony, and in my professional opinion, that not only should the applicant, the application be approved, but also based on what you've already said. I mean, you guys agreed to change the lot width to fifty feet, sent it to council, then denied him the first time, and then said, "We're not going to do it anymore." That's not fair. Because it's the assumption that he had coming forward. So, with that and what he said, I'm going to be brief and just say that professionally, please approve the application because it not only makes sense from being fair, but it makes sense from a planning standpoint. Because all of the criteria that he's asking variance for, you got an outdated master plan, an outdated ordinance, but you also have a solution that you heard and voted on and didn't follow through it. Okay? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tremulak.
I'm surprised, I didn't expect to, somebody had to, so... Well, I think, from what you've heard, I think it's apparent that the sixty-foot lot width requirement is not consistent with the prevailing lot widths in this neighborhood. Mr. Steck indicated in his testimony, you have a hundred and forty-three lots in his study area, all subject to a sixty-foot lot width requirement. And ninety-seven of those hundred and forty-three lots, or almost seventy percent, are non-conforming with a vast, with a large number of those fifty-foot in width or less, including a number of lots in the immediate vicinity of this property, including two lots directly across the street on Washington Avenue, which are only thirty-seven and a half feet. And then, as Mr. Rahim pointed out, we've got, I think, five out of the seven or five out of the nine lots on this side of the street on Washington Avenue are non-conforming. And if you go around the block and take into account Granada Place and the lots on Orange that are all part of this same block, you've got the vast majority of those lots that don't meet the sixty-foot requirement. And a good number of them, the majority of those non-conforming lots, don't even meet the fifty-foot requirement, that lot width that we're seeking here. And as Mr. Rahim pointed out, this board looked at that, or your planners looked at it, and recommended, in light of their analysis of the prevailing lot widths in the neighborhood, that the requirement be modified from sixty feet to fifty feet. The board initially went along with that and then subsequently changed its opinion. But, again, what we're proposing is not inconsistent with what prevails in this neighborhood. We're not going to do anything that's going to disturb or interrupt or negatively impact the streetscape, the rhythm of housing on that side of the street or in this neighborhood. the streetscape, the rhythm of housing on that side of the street or in this neighborhood. We're going to fill in this area, or this lot, with a house that fits in, blends in with the existing architecture and the sizes of the existing houses. We've designed this with sensitivity to the neighborhood to the east, to be affected by this, most, by pushing a house 10 feet away from the sideline, whereas 6 feet is the Yeah, I think, you know, there's, we've presented sufficient justification for the granting of the variance primarily under the C2 criteria for the reasons mentioned by Mr. Steck. I don't see any negative detriment whatsoever. And I also think, as was mentioned in the last hearing, and this, I think can be my final comment, as Mr. Steck pointed out, this is the largest and the deepest lot in the neighborhood. And I think it's fair to say, and Mr. Dedman's testimony kind of supports this, that the original plan here was for there to be two houses on this lot, that this was a double lot. It was always envisioned, I think, that this would ultimately be developed, that that's the way this neighborhood was laid out, and that's what was anticipated, and that's what we're seeking to bring to fruition in this application. So for all those reasons, I would respectfully urge the board to grant the subdivision application with the lot width variance we've requested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This application has mainly focused on the subdivision aspect of it. I agree with quite a bit of what's been said about the ordinance. I never understood why a 60-foot requirement was imposed. And not only in this neighborhood, but in other neighborhoods, there are likewise similar unrealistic requirements that were put in place. And maybe it was a feeling at the time when the zoning ordinance was enacted, that there should be a certain sense of uniformity, and that certain lot widths were preferable over others, 60 over 50, 75 over 70, or whatever. But, I mean, clearly, when you look at the neighborhood, there's just no chance that this would ever be a 60-foot lot, 60-foot wide lot neighborhood. Even if you, the only way that you could even approach that would be to combine properties and then you'd be creating oversized lots. Even the smallest lots, if you combine the smallest lots, they would create an oversized lot. So they were, you were never getting to 60 in this neighborhood. And I always thought, when we were discussing about making the zoning laws reflect more closely what the actual development was, I always thought that was a good idea. We've always discussed, in terms of any development in the town, the aspect of the streetscape and the rhythm of the buildings and the development. And it has always been a priority that there be some, not uniformity, but that there be a sense of consistency, a sense of rhythm. And the idea was that new construction or development should not be exerting a drastic change in the area, that it should be consistent with and enhance what's already developed. The, whenever we've looked at subdivisions, anywhere else in the town, since I've been on the planning board, that has always been one of the primary considerations. And we have denied and granted, based on whether or not, at various points, whether or not something fit into the neighborhood. This is not an overcrowded neighborhood. The rhythm of the street, the rhythm of the neighborhood, the rhythm of the placement of the homes, is not going to be disrupted by dividing this property, subdividing this property into two 50-foot lots. Even if you subdivide other properties in the area, and if we're talking about getting in the vicinity of 50-foot lots for other large properties in this area, your prospects are limited, extremely limited. The fact of the matter is, is that most of the lots, as you can see by the map, are 50 or less. And that, and this is not that unusual, in terms of the streetscape and many other neighborhoods in this town. And even the more narrow lots, when you ride in the neighborhood, you don't get the sense of being overcrowded, there's lots of vegetation, even on those 34-foot lots. And this is, this part of town has not changed a great deal over the past 60 years, in terms of the housing stock that's in here. And the anecdote Mr. Dedman recites, I heard all the time growing up, with respect to the property that I lived on and my parents', which is the other 100-foot lot that's on the street. So it, you know, whether or not that was true at the time, whether or not, you know, over the past 70, 80 years, you know, laws changed and thinkings changed, you know, we're at a situation now where we have a certain zoning requirement. And in order to get the 50-foot lots, we require that property owners and developers come in and obtain a variance. I don't see any detriment to the streetscape, to the neighborhood, by adding another family onto the street. The house, I think, is totally appropriate in terms of what we've been shown. I don't think we have enough detail on the house, though, in terms of perhaps materials and landscaping and that sort of thing, but we can deal with that. I think that the driveway setup is something, again, that is common in Montclair. I know many properties, not just in the South End, but throughout the town, that have shared driveways and have had shared driveways for decades. So this, again, is not something new, an unusual. I think it will work well here, in terms of the spacing that it's given to, and the consideration that it's given to the other homeowners on the block. So, you know, with some conditions, I would be in favor of approving this application. And that is my motion. We have to, well, we'd have to flesh out conditions, but I would move that we approve the application. Anyone else want to be heard?
I'm going to reluctantly support this, because I, and my reluctance is because I think it sets bad precedent in some ways. And let me explain why, because I want to clarify some of the issues that came up. The reason, I believe, the board backed off of reducing the 60-foot lot width, is because they felt that in some areas, not this particular one, but in some areas, that a reduction of lot size could spur on a rush to subdivision in many places. And I think, when they realized that that was the potential outcome, as opposed to a smoothing, or clarification, or ease of enforcing the zoning, as you mentioned, sir, I think everyone backed off because we realized we didn't have clarity of just how many lots might be affected in other areas. And so for that reason, I think in some ways that this is bad precedent. Nonetheless, I'm swayed by many of the arguments that were made, both by the chair and summary from the various witnesses. We heard about this particular neighborhood and agree that zoning does need to accurately reflect the neighborhood. I'm also swayed by the aging in place issue that is impacted here. And so for that, for that reason, I reluctantly, again, support this. But I think, my final point is, I think we need to clarify some factual inaccuracies that were stated. The subdivision that was created for the eight homes on Pleasant Avenue was to code. We were mandated to do that because it actually adhered to the zoning. It was not a granted variance. The variances granted were to improve the configuration of the lot. But had we not even granted those variances, they still would have been able to create that subdivision. The same, the issue on Elm Street, the Gates development, that we were mandated by code. Those lots adhered to the zoning. The same on Clermont. So there was no, the term I heard frequently mentioned, that somehow, something was being done against this particular homeowner and we had approved these other lots, that was not the case. Those were, as far as I'm concerned, or my remembrance, they were all to code. So I think that's important going forward, it doesn't affect this application, but it's important that people understand the facts and the motivations behind decisions. This board is reticent to, because of open space, I believe, open space goals, to approve lots of subdivisions. In the past, that may have been a need, but I think there's a different consideration now. And so, given that to the side for the reasons stated, I'm going to reluctantly support
I was a no vote the last go-round, and I'm a member, I live in the 4th Ward, and I'm very sensitive to the building that goes on in the 4th Ward as compared to other wards in town. So I'm always concerned about my neighbors and their worry about the loss of open space and sunlight and greenery and all of that. However, I'm persuaded by Mr. Dedman's argument, that he bought this house with the understanding that it was a subdivisible lot. And it sways me to say, yes, I would vote and support this motion, change my position.
Will you vote or not?
Well, if you want to, is this a time to be heard? If you want to be heard. Because it hasn't been, the motion hasn't been seconded yet.
Oh, okay. I'll just comment, the fact that all the other variances are taken away makes it really easy for me, so, I mean, that's, and there's no issue that wouldn't exist in other circumstances, like Mr. Steck said. If you put a larger house, there could have a smaller setback and that sort of thing. So I'm going to go for it.
I'd like to second it.
All right, so, just for clarification, too, while we're clarifying things, we've had a combination of applications where there haven't been, where there've been subdivisions without the necessity for variances, and where there have been subdivisions with the necessity for variances. The other thing I want to clarify is that, just saying what you said, Martin, in a little different way, the issue about looking at the zoning laws and making changes with respect to minimum lot width sizes and other changes, is not off the table. It's been pulled back, again, because of a feeling that we needed more information to make sure that the implementation wasn't done, I guess, more or less how this 60-foot lots width implementation was done, just without enough information as to how it was going to impact everything. And that we're still looking at it, we've been so busy with the other development projects in town, that we haven't had a chance to focus on it yet, but we're, it's not off the table, and we will continue to explore that. Because, you know, there was a reason why we originally decided to do it in the first place, and I'll leave it at that. Conditions. With respect to the materials for the house, I would like to make that subject to our review committee, to make sure that the house is appropriately finished, and is indeed an asset for the neighborhood. We don't, we just don't have a lot of the details, I feel, at this point in time, as to, you know, what materials are going to be used and such. The, do we have other issues?
The only other potential condition that I recorded was the comment from Mr. Brodak about the applicant complying with the tree ordinance, but the applicant would have to do that in any event.
Anyway, right. But I do believe we have their commitment that any trees that they take down, they will replace.
Does that also apply to trees on the curb, by the curb? No, that's. Because it looks like, from one of the pictures here, that there may be a tree where the new drivers.
There are quite a few trees. And the problem is, basically, that the trees that are between the sidewalk and the curb, I think the whole town, the roots are compromised on it. Washington recently had a number of trees removed this year. And they've also, the town has been planting new trees. I got a new one in front of my house, that's kind of half-dead now, but.
Mine?
No, all the rain, all the rain started raining back. But in any case, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to things that are in the public venue. But what about the sidewalks?
I think they should be replaced.
Because the sidewalks are in pretty bad shape.
And that was, that actually was indicated on A1.
It's actually, yes, we can reflect that, that was a prior comment. And, yes, we agree to replace the sidewalks, and they are shown on the plan.
And did we have comments from Mr. Watkins?
Yeah, the last condition, yeah, sorry, yes.
Here's your comments.
And so, you know, have you agreed to, will you agree to comply with Mr. Watkins's comments or otherwise work it out with him?
Have you seen them?
Is there a new letter?
This is July 13th.
There has to be a new letter, because this is a new application.
I don't think we received it.
I didn't get it.
Wasn't in your packet?
No.
I don't think so.
Well, at least it wasn't on, yeah, it wasn't on the township website.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I asked.
Sorry about that. I might have put this, I might have distributed before Tom submitted his report.
You could.
That's why I submitted the application, so.
I have others. I'll send you a list of what I don't have.
Okay.
I would do that with the, with the water going, we can, we can, and we'll comply with all of Washington.
All right, and anything else that we should note?
Other than the usual, for a subdivision.
Right. Should we just be clear that the larger setback is going to be on the east side of proposed Lot 7.02? I know that was testified to.
I think that's on the, that's shown on the drawings. And we need a better set of drawings, right?
Right, right. And just so that there's no surprise, there will be a development fee assessed to the new house, as always is the case.
As always.
So John, the last go-around on this, one of the conditions was that the house on the new lot shall be no higher than 33 feet. So I forget what measurement was mentioned.
33 and 1/2 is the actual.
Oh.
33 and 1/2. And 35 is the wire, the maximum permitted.
Ah, well, I don't, I forget why we had 33 here in the conditions, because we really want to shadow the other, the house next door.
I think we wanted to make sure that it too, that the height was consistent with the surrounding houses.
Yes.
And that's why I asked the question about the scale of the drawings, because it seemed like they were just about in sync.
Right.
And for 6 inches, I think, I think we're good.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I'll roll, I'll call the roll on this one. Vice Chair Brodak?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Counselor Schlegler?
Yes.
Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
Mr. Ian Wally?
Yes.
Ms. Lockman?
Yes.
And Chair Nguyen?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the building. We're going to recess.
And, well, hang on, is Mr. Gray here?
Yeah.
Allen's. Mr. Tremblay? Mr. Tremblak, is Mr. Gray here?
I don't think so.
Because I mean, if, go ahead.
We'll hold off on the recess.
Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Nguyen, can I say something, please? Listen up, everybody. Everybody, listen up, listen up, listen up.
That's.
The only thing I'd like to do is, because of the number of times you had to come out to these meetings to ask the Debnams, appreciate the support that each one of you gave us, and thank you very much, thank you very much.
Just to be one of my neighbors.
Mr. Tremblak?
He's not here. I didn't get walked away.
So do we need to know when we'll continue that, too?
So we'll, so Janice, when do we continue that matter?
The Gray, the Gray application will be continued September 17.
September 17?
But, you know, my wife and I.
Okay. No further notice on that?
Assuming we're going to move to bills, I noticed that Mr. Watkins's July 13 invoice wasn't included for the Wellmont. It's listed on the balance sheet, but it wasn't included in the package?
Let me see, that might have been.
I just wanted to note it, all the bills, otherwise, I would move to approve them, but just.
That might have been paid already, that was probably, that might have been approved at a previous meeting.
Okay.
What happens is I, I print this up, because I remember we met two weeks in one week after the other, so that was approved at a previous meeting, and I just.
I just wanted to note it.
Didn't get to update the balance sheet.
So we'll pay everything else but that.
Motion to approve bills.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Brodok, second by Chair Nguyen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.